All the meeting here for the elementary school clinic to order six oh two. My first order of business is to review and approve the minutes of November sixteenth and November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three.
May you approve the minutes of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three?
Second is our writing. All in favor? Next up, financial payments, warrants.
Okay. So first thing for the record is the warrant totals that were signed since the meeting in November. There were twenty-four totaling one hundred twenty thousand, fifty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Sorry, I felt like I was saying that wrong as I was reading it. And then I emailed out the expense reports. There's nothing new or surprising on here. It's things that you've all seen already to date, or we've talked about to date. Primarily, we typically talk about budget overages. I want to encourage you to look at the subtotals in each of the categories, because we're a bottom-based budget. So at the end of the year, as long as we have enough funds to cover all the expenses, it's okay if lines go up and down and we cover overages with other line items. Going first to the school choice report, one of the things that I want to point out is buildings, general repairs. So that line there, just as a reminder, we've spent about sixty-six thousand, or we have had encumbered, I think, sixty-six thousand. No, we've spent sixty-six thousand, which was on the air conditioning that we're waiting for rebates on. And then from there, the extraordinary maintenance line, that's for the engineering fees for the playground project and the front entryway. Just as a refresher, because those are big numbers coming out of school choice. So that's over a hundred thousand there. General fund, we encumber salaries for the whole year. So when you look at the bottom line of the budget currently, on the last page, there's only about eight percent of the budget remaining, and that's because all of our salaries and wages are encumbered for the year. So we'll have plenty of funds to cover salaries and wages, and then some funds remaining, about four hundred and fifteen thousand year-to-date.
This may sound like a silly question. What does encumber mean?
Encumber means it holds the funds before we pay for something. Basically, just sort of takes it out of your checkbook ahead of time.
And you wait for it to clear.
Gotcha. Ending.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a really good question. Are there any specific line item questions that you have? The other thing that I'll say quickly is that recurring theme, you hear this every year from me, Deerfield always has the most personnel changes out of all of the elementary schools, whether that's just staffing changes, or if we have someone on leave of absence, or with unpaid time. So we are going to capture some savings in the budget as is typical by the end of the year. So we'll talk about how to use those funds as we proceed, and Tina will have some end-of-year spending to do with those wages.
Any specific questions I can answer? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up is placeholder for the goal setting for the committee. If anyone has any topics they want to bring up.
All right. Here we go.
Principals report.
Yeah, so I did send you an electronic copy about three minutes ago, so you should have that in your inbox. And a couple of things I'm going to hold off onto until the budget, just to make sure there's continuity in conversation, some of them pertaining to the budget. The first thing I'll talk about is student voice. It's a reoccurring thing for us at Deerfield, really trying to bring student voices in. And we did a student survey, I know we had spoke about that, and some of the questions that came up, that came back, we were curious about, like some of the answers such as, I put in here, forty-two percent of the fifth and sixth grade students agreed that they contributed to deciding class rules. Thirty-seven percent in grades three and four expressed that they thought teachers made lessons interesting. And so we wanted to hear a little bit more about how they interpreted the questions. Was our survey valid, where we actually measuring what we intended to measure? And there's a video in there, it's about twelve minutes, so I encourage you to watch it on your own time. It's a really interesting one. One big takeaway for one of these topics was when students agreed that only half of the students felt like they contributed to rules, is that fifth and sixth grade students make agreements or class constitutions, and they look at rules as different. So it was, it was interesting information to bring the kids in and ask them what they were thinking. So we'll do a follow-up survey. Another topic that we're working on is we're establishing a DEI committee, and we're looking at how we can systematically address bias and stereotypes that have come up in our community from time to time. And really, there's, it talks in here about community engagement and responding to incidents, but in in all of this, we're trying to make this more systematic approach. How can we put these things and make this part of our culture and community that we're doing, and everybody is involved with that? I'm going to skip the DES again for now and the Yankee Candle. And if you want to go ahead and read, when you give a minute, but voices from the classroom, so classroom teachers, a couple of times a year, I'll ask them to just provide you guys with an update, what's going on in the classroom, because I think it's fun to connect to right into the building. And at the bottom is a little link, I sent it out to families, to about a Deerfield resident that is creating the driveway art that I thought would be good information for you guys to have to see how our community is pulling us as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
We have a public comment? Online, have any public comments?
I would say Jen Smith has dedication, because she's selling concessions right now at the basketball game.
Okay. All right. Next up, we're voting on policy review as last time. Good staff, man, this time. Darius, do you have any input on any of these? You were not here when I cut off the call.
Yeah, so these are, again, you read them last time, they're straightforward. The removal one is just basically school community membership. It's not necessary. As we went through, as the committee, subcommittee went through the handbook, and I'll talk about this with the next set of policies especially. There's a lot that, they're there, they say something, but they're not needed, they're not legally needed. There's no reason why there's, you know, committee members in this particular one we're removing. May maintain memberships on national, state, and regional school community boards and associations. Why you'd have to have a policy for that is whatever's that filler page, maybe it was needed back before ed reform, I don't know. So you're going to hear a lot of ones that are like, you can see what they're saying, but why, it's just, and it's not part of the master book. And so we only should really, really hear from the master book of, from MASC unless we have our own stamp, what we're doing something different in our district. Not just to have policies, have policies. All right, so that one's a filler one to remove.
Okay, so look for a vote here with policy DK. Motion. So we're with B, we're on the B, remove policy DK first?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, who's marrying it? All in favor? And then there's what, poll four, five, we're voting.
So the five, you can, you can vote as a group? All right, so AA, I was reading for you, AA district legal status. AA one is regional legal status, but we, we collectively vote, even though your vote doesn't await to that, because it's the regional committee, we've been just voting them all along, we've been doing them together. Non-discrimination on the basis of sex is ACA. There's updated language there. Suspension of apologies is BGF, allows us to suspend our policies, that's a new one that we've been doing. CHCA is approval of handbooks and directives, and a new language there.
To change policies, AA, AA one, ACA, BGF, and CHCA. All in favor? All right. Next up, we're voting on the superintendency agreement that we put into place back in November.
Yep, so this is the, this is the agreement that you guys actually got a trial run through when you discussed the renewal of my contract, or the renewal of me, if you put a contract. That was kind of our, we did a reading of it, then we did a trial run, and now, now if you like it, approve it.
A motion to approve the agreement regarding.
All in favor? Next up, we have looking at the equity plan.
So I also have Laura Ramsey here with us, one of the architects behind this plan, so I get, I get I get to start with this, and then I just really wanted to show. I wanted to show this graph on the second page of the plan, because I think when we started talking about all these different plans, and where does it all fit, we showed you the the actual action steps, that was that colored grid that we built from the equity audit. You know, when we put this kind of visual together, it really helped me kind of keep it all together in my mind as well, so I just want to share that first. So we have our four static plans that direct how we're running the district, from the curriculum management plan, professional development plan, the assessment management plan, the equity plan. So those four, they don't really change year to year unless we're making some major changes, okay? From those plans, you know, we, we have a district strategic plan. This district strategic plan can kind of point out sometimes, but those, those practices are feeding into what we're putting into our district strategic plan, rather. And then the three green plans on the bottom are what you're seeing annually and voting on, because there's a lot of change. So you'll see our, usually our PD calendar comes out in April, May. School improvement plans come from a school council that gets before the school committee. And then also now the new equity action steps that we showed earlier this year that we kind of organized out over several years about what we're working on in those different things. So that's kind of the flow, and the green plans are updated every year. So there's a lot of fluidity in those. And the blue plans on the top are more static. So in the equity plan that you have in front of you, Laura, I'm going to, you good, you good figure?
Yeah.
Laura really speaks fluently in this area, instead of me reading out my notes.
If you had a chance to look at the equity plan, you'll see that it starts with highlighting parts of the curriculum, of looking at the blue plans at the top. Portions of the blue curriculum plan, the professional development plan, and the assessment management plan that are that speak to equity, priorities for the district, expectations, practices, and expectations. It's important that equity isn't siloed as its own plan, but that it's embedded in all of our plans. So first, we highlighted what's consistent and related to equity, and the other three static plans that guide our district plans and our annual action plans. And then in addition to that, this equity plan speaks to, I just want to highlight a few things. It reiterates in expectations for instructional delivery. It is the only place where roles and responsibilities are around managing, implementing, monitoring, evaluating equity in our district. It assigns the roles of school committees, superintendent, directors, teachers, admin assistants. It outlines monitoring and evaluation procedures and community engagement. And in the conclusion, just that it's essential to involve stakeholders, including students, parents, teachers, the community, and development and implementation of the plan, and it sets out the expectations that are static, so that every year the annual plans are supporting an ongoing and consistent effort, and that it's not a completely pivoting annual plan. If you have questions about it, then we discuss.
I have a few questions.
Yeah.
And we talked about some of these themes already here, but I thought it was helpful just to like talk about it again in context of equity. I saw that there was stuff kind of focusing on tracking absenteeism a little bit more, and I was hoping you could just talk a little bit about why that's important in terms of an equity plan.
Absolutely. Well, attendance to school does have a correlation with achievement and growth in school. And when we look at the state data, which we, the state tracks it and sends it back to us, we would like to do a better job in tracking it internally. So we do have as part of our action plan, investing in Tableau, which is a data system that will allow us to quickly access and cross-reference lots of demographic groups and lots of student criteria. But when we look at the state data, students with low income have a higher rate of absenteeism, and there is a large disparity between students with low income and MCAS achievement scores. And that raises questions that we need to consider as a district, such as is it something about our curriculum that prohibits low-income students from accessing the content, or is it about attendance? And understanding the data better will help us understand how to close that gap in achievement and address the right problem.
I can add to that. So the state right now, if you're following the state politics, going before the state board, is they're looking to change the accountability level of the MCAS. Not the MCAS, but the full assessment system, they're going to look at, and they're going to make attendance go from five percent to twenty percent on accountability of schools. And so the question is, will the board pass that? There's a lot of debate whether schools should be, have that much weight of their accountability on whether or not students walk through the front door. And so that's in speaking, you can hear a little bit in there, like if there's some work there, and I don't think that, but I'm not sure they should fall on their accountability at schools, that because they're saying students who are not coming through the front door are not achieving, and that should be one of our priority to improve achievement, is getting to the front door. Which makes sense, I'm not sure they should be changing accountability scores on that, but that's going in front of the mass board, I think on the twenty-third, twenty-sixth, it's the end of this month. So they gave this in a conference with the commissioner last week, on Tuesday or Wednesday, and they gave us till Friday to give him feedback. It was really kind of this quick turnaround, so.
But two things that haven't recovered since the pandemic are attendance and equity gaps in progress. So if there's a connection, this is a good time to.
And the state just sent out chronic absence and student attendance to us, because we haven't recovered, and talking about the accountability piece, it is a big question for us.
Well, and I think, you know, regardless of what's happening at the state level, being able to have our own data and not just making assumptions.
Right.
Right. I think, I also think the things that we are not measuring even necessarily as a state or necessarily as a community is like kids' immune systems recovering, coming back to school, and I guess I'm speaking just from my own experience with smaller kids. You know, they were locked up for three years, and then all of a sudden, they're in school environments, and even though this is the second year of like really being full at it, I just, I think kids are getting sick too, and parents are used to the like, if they have a sniffle, they can't go to school. I think there's, there's a combination of things, and being able to have the data to look at that, how it applies to our school is really important.
You're absolutely right, and that, we're seeing that, we're also seeing mental health days, you know, more often than we've seen in the past, where people are looking at mental health a little bit stronger, and also, you know, you seem to overwhelm, you can take the day off, and, you know, and that can be abused very easily, it can also be used appropriately, and so I don't want to make judgmental on T V here. But and then we also see people taking vacations. They've kind of gotten the habit that they can, you know, during, or they felt that we're still making up for years lost, and we can take a week or two off. And so, but if you add those all up, they're all in, you know, they're all on there. And so, and I'm not judging with people taking vacations, I understand that as well, but yeah, we'll head up.
I was happy to see the section on roles, responsibilities, spelling out who was responsible for what. That was something that I know I was struggling with, was when we move on from the equity audit, like what does that look like, how we're making sure work is getting done and by who.
It's also interesting, or having to try to figure out that the ways that the policies and the statistics translate into on-the-ground relation, you know, because really a lot of it, I imagine, would have to do with that sense of belonging and ownership of everyone involved in the process of learning. And I mean, I I'll do credit to everyone for getting kids to feel, you know, some kids don't have to even, they love being in school, and then there's the hard sell for some others. And, you know, to make it so that it's like, there's something interesting, you know, what are you looking forward to today? And, you know, trying to make that, you know, while keeping all those numbers in the back of your head, but not like translating it into hello, number three forty-two, you know, like you're not, you're not doing that, but it's, it's, I don't know, is there any? Well, there's, yeah, I think that's more of a comment than a question, I don't know.
I think our district is going to interpret this push as an opportunity to call families in, as opposed to ostracizing families for not having strong attendance, but do you want to talk about attendance? Can we have a family meeting, and, you know, having more outreach, so that that belonging piece is there? I think that the state push on attendance could go either way, in terms of shaming people more, and creating some resistance to compliance of attendance rules, but I think we're going to look at it as a chance to say, what can we be doing to get you here on time, what can we be doing to get you here more?
Yeah. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, because it is that, it's the how you, how we all express those, you know, like what's the ultimate goal? The ultimate goal is for people to feel included and belonging, so shaming people is not the way to go, but it's, you know, but yet, you know, yeah, so you're trying to get, it's, it's having the right lens on it, right? So yeah, whatever, you know, let us know what ways we can help, you know, do that.
I'm curious, what is the role of the anti-racism equity committee going forward from here? Are they going to continue on working and keep providing this, or?
Yes, we just codified it with this equity plan. By writing it into the equity plan, the district is supporting this district-wide group of stakeholders from different perspectives, and opportunity to meet, I think we vote four times a year, at least more if the committee is taking the initiative to meet more, but just so that if the people who initially expressed interest leave, their kids graduate the district, or the teachers move on, that we'll still have it as part of the plan. And right now, the plan is that the group is, it's a chance to raise issues around awareness, so people could, it's an open agenda, it gets passed out to anyone who wants to be on the email list in advance of the meeting, so that anyone can add to the agenda if they have a topic to bring up and share and discuss. But it is also a regular opportunity for the admin team to report back on progress on the annual equity plan, so it functions as a bit of a yeah, it's just a way to keep track of our progress and not let go of our vision and our, our goals for the year. So whatever people put on the agenda, plus a chance to like speak to progress that's being made on the annual equity plan.
I had another question, just to, and Darius, maybe we'll speak to this, but how does our plan help us sort of abide by whatever D E S I requirements there are around, sort of like, because I know D E S I, what, two, three years ago, kind of like reworked some of their requirements? How does this fit into that?
I think it fits right in. I think we, we kind of went our own way to get here, we kind of got ahead of D E S I, and then D E S I came kind of roaring back, kind of its office, different initiatives, and a lot of professional development, selling, mostly selling, but selling a way to get there, and we were already on a different way. I think we're at the same spot, at the same spot, because we're looking at, we look at the plan, accountability in curriculum, is there? Accountability in professional development is there, accountability in assessment, teachers and administrators is there, so that's exactly what D E S I is doing, and so we're doing the same thing. So we just kind of got there in different approach. I think we're bias-wise, just hearing how people are talking about it, I think we're there holistically, because of the way we went there, where it's just another initiative coming through in some districts, you know what I mean, where they have, you know, they have, they have to do these kind of different things, and while, I'm not saying people in those districts aren't one-hundred percent for it, we kind of went through by getting, having conversations and getting everybody talking about it with more holistic approach, and we had more time to, too, so when we, when we were doing it, we didn't think we had more time to do it, but because we took three years to kind of put this thing together, and then D E S I kind of rolled it out, and like in the first year, next year, you need to be doing this, and so you had to move the staff along faster, whether or not they're with you or not, so that's my
Yeah.
At the mass party in November, the conference, I attended a lot of sessions on DEI work, and for the most part, I was left feeling really good about where our districts are, comparison to where some other states are, sort of like, starting their journey. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I have just one more, I'm sorry, don't be bad, I said everything. I wasn't, so I was, I really liked that there was opportunities for stakeholders to provide feedback. What about teachers? Like, that was not as clear to me, where teachers fall in that sort of category. It sounds like some schools will have like committees that maybe teachers can join to like participate, but is there kind of surveys from teachers around the effectiveness of PD, or how they're feeling about kind of teaching this stuff?
Right now, our surveys and our feedback forms for teachers are unique to feedback on a curriculum, or feedback on a professional development initiative. We don't have what do you think about our equity survey, you know, generally, it would be more specific to a PD training, or to a curriculum that we adopted and have been using for a year. And the anti-racism equity committee is open to all teachers, it's one of the, you know, I think the last time we met, we had equal numbers of admin teachers and community members at the last A and E meeting. So those are the vehicles at this point. But if you're making a recommendation or something.
We are surveying teachers about the PD, about equity, so if they didn't, if they didn't think the PD was effective, or wasn't hitting things, they're giving that feedback.
Yes, yes.
I mean, teachers just seem like a very important part to the puzzle. And also, you know, their enthusiasm, or like really believing in it and buying into it, seems to be an important part. So whatever vehicles y'all are getting feedback about that is important.
It's not one of the most important parts. It's not happening, teachers is not happening, so.
Roles and responsibilities, school committee create and adopt policies to guide inclusive and equitable practices. It's hard to, it's like, yes, I get that, I like that, but how do you manifest that? But perhaps it's in line with what you're saying, to be able, even if it's just to like here ye, here ye, we declare that people should do things in an equitable way, or, you know, I mean, that's a very very simplistic way of looking at it, but that, you know, there could be some sort of a position given from the school committee towards, that, you know, that overall umbrella that would tie that all in together. Perhaps we can put that in a goal plot or something.
Yeah. Well, I think that's like an opportunity for us to
Take some of the same PDs.
Right.
Yeah.
Do some research and learning on our own, to determine which policies and.
Well, tonight you voted in the new language, we will not discriminate on a basis of sexual orientation or gender identity, that wasn't in before, so thank you for doing that. That's actually not small, that's really a big change. I'm not sure that all school committees are adopting, maybe.
Does somehow make that more evident, I guess, than just a byline and, you know, seventy-three-page document, but as a guiding principle. Unintended, Tina. But yeah, and then of course, ensure adequate funding for meditation.
Like, and asking about the effectiveness of PD, and how the teachers feel about it.
And the new curriculum is vetted for having culturally responsive resources and culturally responsive teaching strategies get promoted, and it's expensive to get a new curriculum like that, and to do the training that goes with it, and your support makes a huge difference in the district's ability to keep moving forward.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Next up, we're doing a first read on policies to change and policies to remove.
Do I have a summary I can kind of fire through, if you want me to?
Yeah, please.
And so that you can kind of get the strong first read, so that the second time through, we want to do it this way. So again, Um, so again, kind of what I'm saying before, um, um, some of these are adding language of law that's been updated and I'll try to kind of go through as we do it. So E A E C is also J I C C, student conduct on school buses. The cost, the cross-reference is not in place and should be in both places. So it's conduct on school buses. E A G is student transportation private vehicles. There's an updated language around core checks. Again, we do this in practice. So if you want to say that a lot of these is not, not changing what our practice is, but is making sure our policies say that we're doing that in practice. So if you're a parent volunteer driving a student, you have to be core. D G I, staff participation in political activities. Basically, it allows, um, staff participation in political activities outside the workday. So you can't be, um, uh, you know, putting forward political, um, things in the classroom. G C A is political, is professional staff positions. That's a, um, this is a new policy. But basically it says you should have job descriptions for every policy and that they be approved, every position and they be approved by school committee. G C K is staff assignments and transfer. This is again, another new policy, but it basically gives a language around how teacher assignment, um, practice is done. Um, again, it's, we follow that already in place. G D B is staff, uh, support staff contracts and compensation plans. This is again, another new policy. Our current, um, staff contracts follow this current practice and we also have a staff handbook for non-union employees that follows this practice. H B is negotiation legal status. Um, it's just legal rain, language around the negotiations being a legal, a legal practice. And they say we should have it. I read it and I don't really understand why we need it, but they say we should have it. J F is school admissions. This is again, a new one. This is for admissions, new admissions to the school that follows our current practice and how they come into kindergarten. J F B B is school choice. There are updated dates in the school choice about what timeframes we have to make our decisions by. We usually make them earlier than what it says in that policy when you read through it, but you know, that's, we can go before, you just can't go after those dates. And J F B B one is frontiers, which has different dates. Um, they go a little bit earlier. Want to keep going to removal policies?
Sure.
Cause it's just re, um, all of these are not part of the M A S C, master, um, school committee guide recommended policies. So some of them have been removed over the years in either previous administrations. Couldn't have been me. Missed it or, um, for some reason we have one of the books that they didn't have. So the first one is administrative reports, C L. Um, you can ask for administrative reports all the time. You don't need a policy that kind of spells out, um, something we haven't been doing as well, um, for annual reports.
Just as a clarification, these are, these are pieces that were removed previously and.
No, we're looking to remove them. They currently are on the books and again, this is where this is your subcommittee that voted to, they say that agree that these need to be removed. F B B is enrollment projections. Um, we used to get, um, NASDAQ's, um, five-year predictive enrollment and they were wrong forever. I don't think they ever were right. So we stopped paying, we used to pay thousands of dollars for it. And we, so we stopped paying for that. We get our enrollment projections based on what Kim tells us what's coming up through the, through the community and, um, birth reports in town. So that's really the only predictive things that we have that can give us that. So, um, five-year, making up a five-year enrollment projection is not needed as a policy. G A, um, personnel policies and goals, not part of the master document. Um, and this has been replaced by our equity goals around staffing. So we actually have more than what M A S C is around that. When we talk about equity goals around staffing, a policy that you approved last spring. G C C D is domestic violence leave policy. Legally, this has changed. Um, if you look at the data on that policy, it's many years old. It is no longer recognized by M A S C. It does fall under protections and other policies and such as F M L A and other legal frameworks. G D Q D, suspension dismissal of sports staff members is not, again, not part of it. It's not needed. Uh, it's not needed process found in the collective bargaining agreements for those, under the collective bargaining agreement and it's found in the handbook, or law legally for those outside of it, or their individual contracts such as administrative. G C Q E, uh, the retirement of professional staff members. If you read it, basically just says allowing people to retire, which is really, you don't need a policy to do. And G D Q C is requirement of support staff members. Again, both these are not, um, part of M A S C and are not needed.
Can you tell us these things anyway?
What's that?
We, we get informed about that kind of thing.
Yeah. H negotiations. It's just a bunch of filler languages. I read it. It's also part of the, the M A S C, um, overall agreement. J B A, um, student to student harassment, um, can now, is now, is been, is now longer part of M A S C's thing, but is, you, is found under sexual harassment, bullying prevention, harassment of students and non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. So they got rid of that one. They put all the, um, policies within those other four, student-based and harassment-based policies. J H B B A is public absence notification program policy. We have the attendance policy in the handbooks that you approve, um, both at frontier and at the elementary school. And then there's also the law behind that. J H C religious holidays can now be found under J H. In, you don't need a separate section because under regular absences, religious holidays is, is defined within that. And J K A, horrible punishment. Yep. Can't hit kids. You don't need a policy that seems that. I don't think anybody's confused anymore. Probably just assault and battery nowadays. All right. So if you have questions on those between now and the other one, feel free to send me a note and I can try to answer anything you got.
Thank you. All right. There's no questions now on that? We can move on to the F Y twenty-five budget.
I'm so excited for this. All right.
Look how pretty it is.
It is really pretty.
It's your loco. Isn't it cute? It's one of them. You're gonna see many throughout the presentation. I tried to use them all. Okay. So, uh, we'll try to move through this as quickly as we can, but there's a lot of information and a lot of moving parts and different pieces. Don't forget, this is just the first presentation of the budget. We have several months to talk about these things. And, uh, Darius and I both feel like this is a much easier conversation this year than we've had in the past. So everybody's sort of sigh of relief for a moment. Uh, before we get into twenty-five, let's look back and reflect on twenty-four because I think it's important for us to, to recall what we went through last year and some of the challenges that we faced. So we ended up adopting a three point two six percent increase budget. Uh, I'm not going to read all of those factors for you. You can read them on your own. The, the primary driver was our wage increase. We had some non-wage increases, which is, you know, typically facilities or utilities related. Um, we had a revolving fund adjustment because we anticipated our revenues to go down in, uh, several revolving funds. Um, special education revolving and early childhood revolving, I believe, were the two that we were concerned about last year. Uh, we had a significant discussion about, uh, eliminating two sections and two different grade levels. And actually talked about eliminating a possibility of a third, uh, section, which we ended up funding with ESER. We felt like, two changes last year was a big move. And so we funded, uh, sixty-two thousand off of the budget with ESER funds. So bringing us back a little bit to the beginning of the conversation, we started off with level services last year at a seven point one five percent increase, which is why we came to the decision of reducing grade levels and consolidating classes and eliminating staff. We knew we couldn't go in with a seven and a half percent budget. Uh, so that reduction in staffing saved us about a hundred thousand dollars last year, which is a pretty significant amount. Um, so moving into this year, we are in a really positive financial position because of these, big, hard, challenging decisions that we made. So I applaud the committee for, supporting the administration's recommendations and trusting that the right decisions were being made for the students in the staff of the school. So we, we did the right thing, even though it was really hard to do. So let's look at timeline quickly because you haven't talked or seen anything from Darius or I about timelines. So quickly to fly through this, first presentation is today. We'll have a follow-up meeting in February at the next school committee meeting where you'll see a second draft or we'll continue conversations. March, we have two meetings scheduled. We have the public hearing and then a vote to adopt. And then I believe the town meeting is April twenty-second, which I put in parentheses because that's just my guess at this point. It's the first Monday. The last Monday of the month, right? Yeah. Um, at least that's historically what it's been.
And the last one would be the twenty-ninth.
Maybe it's the third Monday then. I looked at the last two days. Is it always the last? That's why I wasn't sure and it's not. Yeah, but I think it was the Monday after last year. We'll update it for next month. It's towards the end of April. Hopefully it'll be published at that point.
Where did you put that in there?
I might've put it in.
Yeah.
Because last year I think it was like the twenty-fourth, but maybe that was just the way the calendar fell. So anyway.
And just to add on to what Shelly was saying, that means at the end of the February meeting, you want to have a general number where you are because you're going to go into a public hearing to discuss that. So, you know, timing wise and decisions at the end of next meeting, you gotta be the general, you want to be the, you can, you definitely can shift things around, but you want to be in the general ballpark. And when you go to public hearing, you can't really increase the budget unless you have another public hearing. So you kind of want to be either at or be reducing at that point in March.
All right. Uh, so some of you, most of you at this table have heard this before. I don't think any one is brand new. Nope, uh, not this year. So, but I'm going to go through it for the public, uh, and talk quickly about budget development. So our goal during budget development is always to plan a needs-based, student-centered, fiscally responsible budget for the upcoming school year. Uh, Tina does seek input from stakeholders, staff at the school-based level, and then Darius and I talk to other administrators. So we're having discussions about early childhood. We're having discussions about curriculum. We're having discussions about I T and facilities. And all of that comes together in each of the drafts that we move forward with. Um, it's important to note that level services does not result in level funding. So there's always a cost with level service primarily related to COLA increases or step increases for contractual wages. Uh, and then also for non-contractual staff to receive increases too. And then we look at expenditures from prior years and adjust for inflation or anything that we've been over budget on. Um, there's two other steps to the process. One is looking at new needs and initiatives. So making sure that we're presenting to you things that we would like to have and or need to have as part of the first draft of the budget. And then also looking at our revolving funds, which I talked about in that first slide. We review to make sure that the revolving accounts can manage the expenses from the prior year. And if they can't, then we have to make adjustments. Same thing for grants. We make sure that the grants that we rely on are going to be consistent year to year. I'm not going to read through each of these, but I think this is helpful for you when you're looking at your monthly reports as well, not just in talking about the budget. And I will send this to you electronically because you did not get this yet. Um, but I'll make sure you get it at the end of the night. I'll send it off. So these are the function codes. So when you look at the expense reports and we talk about the budget, there's these different categories that's set by DESI. District administration, instruction, pupil services, operations and maintenance, benefits and fixed charges, and then out-of-district placements. There are other codes. These are the primary ones that we use that you're going to see over and over again on expense reports and as we talk about the budget. The biggest one here for us, you're going to see on the next slide is that our budget is primarily made up of, expenditures that relate to direct instruction, student and teaching. That, um, makes up about seventy-five percent of our budget. Pupil services is anything related to, um, the nurse's office, transportation, food service, um, athletics, which is really just for the middle of high school, not here necessarily, um, school security. And what I want to say about benefits and fixed charges is that this is a smaller piece of the pie when you look at our budget because the town pays employee benefits for our staff. So that, if you see frontiers budget, that number is much more significant piece of the pie than, than for the elementary school. All right. Budget drivers. So this goes along with what I was just saying in the last slide. Um, a few of the major budget drivers, salaries and wages is always going to be our largest budget driver. Facilities and operations, transportation, whether that's regular transportation or specialized transportation, and then special education costs. And this is just a general graph. It is a theme district-wide, if not a theme statewide, that instructional expenditures make up three, uh, three quarters of the budget. Um, and then you can see there what the other primary drivers are, especially for a small school, um, facilities, maintenance, operations. Those are some of our bigger ones. Central office falls under district administration as does, um, school committee expenses. So when you go to conferences or if there were stipends in, um, your agreement with the town, then that would fall under there, supplies and materials, those kinds of things. All right. So let's look at the actual numbers for twenty-five now that you have some info about how the budget is built. So this is first glance. Um, before I get into some explanations, I just want to say that level services at one point eight three percent is really attractive, considering we were at seven point one five last year. So when I said earlier that your, um, decisions last year were fiscally responsible as hard as they were, this is why we did it because we could not maintain the level of expenses that we had with the revenues that we have coming in. So we made some good decisions as hard as they were to make. Uh, and this is where that ninety-six thousand is made up of, uh, so wage increases, non-wage increases, and then an adjustment to add back in what was paid from ESER last year, which we're going to talk about a little bit further down the road. Some details about each of these categories quickly before we move on. So the COLA for both of the contracts is two percent for unit A and unit C next year. Uh, teacher stepping is really consistent in the teacher contract unless someone is going to step fourteen, which is where they sit before they hit that nineteen gear of completion for longevity. So that step is always much more significant. Or if there's call and movement, the step or the raises is much higher. Um, but generally for teachers, it's three point one nine percent. So at a minimum, our teachers should see a raise of five point one nine percent in their salary. For, uh, unit C, the steps are not as consistent the way that the salary schedule is built, but, uh, staff will generally, uh, receive between two and a half and three and a half percent on top of the two. So our number is there.
Just for clarity, we're getting what unit A and.
Unit A is the teachers, anyone that falls on a teacher contract. So it's not just grade level teachers, but all related service providers, um, special education interventionists, um, any of, anyone that has to have a desolation sure basically. And then unit C is IAs or any other medical support staff. So it could be a PTA, um, an occupational therapy assistant, a, um, LPN, those kinds of positions. I think that's a good question. So let's see, central office, this is a big one to talk about for Deerfield and it's helping the budget. That number is not typically a negative, especially not a negative twenty thousand. There's two factors here. Deerford enrollment is going down, which you know, as a result of consolidating class sizes and having less school choice students, our numbers are dropping. That impacts the cost share percentage that Deerfield contributes to central office positions. So it's almost a two percent reduction, which has a significant impact. The other factor here is that this year we're seeing the savings from the nurse leader position. We made the change after last year's budget was approved. So we're realizing those savings this year. So that combination is resulting in some significant support for the budget this year. That could fluctuate year to year and it usually does a little bit. I don't think it's going to change a ton for Deerfield, knowing that our enrollment is going to continue to see a decline, which we're going to talk about as we go through the, um, presentation. But next year it might be, you know, five thousand increase or, you know, maybe a ten thousand increase. It, it shouldn't flip so dramatically that we're seeing twenty plus thousand in this category again. Non-wage increases, this is pretty minor this year. This is based on actuals from the prior three years. So I look at all of our expense codes and see what number, what line items were really over. Contracted services for, um, grounds maintenance is one of the lines that continually goes over. Um, trash continually goes over. Uh, accounting software fees keep going up. That's a central office expense, but it still trickles down to the school level. So all of those pieces, I've sort of analyzed and figured out what we need to do for an increase. It's a minor. So all of those pieces, I've sort of analyzed and figured out what we need to do for an increase. It's a minor amount, not significant. Some years it could be much more. And then the ESER adjustment, even if we still have ESER funds available, which we do, and we are going to talk about, my first step is to always pull that off to say, if we didn't have this grant any longer, that is a one-time grant, what would our budget look like? So we're plopping that 62,000 back on here. So even before we get to any of the other pieces of the presentation, this is an excellent starting point. Tina could come in for request for two new staff. And we're still not going to be anywhere near where we were last year, which we're not requesting two new staff necessarily in teaching positions. But the point is we're just in a really healthy spot right now because of all the hard work last year. Alright, let me see what's next before I keep us telling. It's Kim and Tina next. I'm going to hand it over for the next part of the discussion to Kim and Tina because part of this conversation, while we have the opportunity of a healthy budget and some attrition due to retirements, we want to talk about the options of adding programming at Deerfield Elementary. So I'm going to give it to them to talk about the program and then we'll bring it back to what the financial impact is. Do you want to take the lead?
Sure. I'm so happy to come here and talk with you. And I just want to emphasize the responsiveness of Deerfield and Deerfield community with the children that they have coming through. And I had to come to the school committee 14 years ago and we needed three installments of preschool, given the needs of the children. And we're at that point again, where we're looking very closely at the needs of the children, that we have the complexity and the intensity of the services that they require. And we would like to set up a new program for them. That is an early childhood-based program that includes students that we know very well and love, and that also has an opportunity to grow and expand. We are looking at low incidence children, right, that we need to service very well with an inclusive framework in our, our mind and give them opportunities. And we're looking at a program that really spans that pre-K, K and 1. So that very early learning, the early development and what that looks like. And there's a lot of nuances to that. So in response to the students that we have currently and the needs that are presented that include multiple handicaps, medical needs, complications that really need a nest to come around for these children to learn, to support their learning, to have them be included as much as possible is what we're really proposing today. And we're excited to be able to do it. We've had a lot of conversations around this and I love DS Den. That was.
It's not a nest, it's a den.
It's a den. No, that would be something here. But really, it's, it's, it's a beautiful idea, you know? We've brainstormed and written a lot of kinds of things around it with specific children in mind. And it's very exciting to be able to have the opportunity, logistically, space-wise, financially, to really be responsive to the needs of our community.
We have about five to six students possibly identify our program.
Low incidence.
Yes, so children with rare genetic disorders, right? That or complications through the birth process that leads to multiple handicap, significant trauma that leads to some kind of presentation that needs a different kind of approach. And I know it's in the papers all the time or when you read that children are coming with more complexities to school. In the way our, our towns are set up, it's a low incidence at each school in the early childhood. So could we build something here at Deerfield to be responsive to the families and the students that we have now, but also to be a beacon or a great den? So those in our union. To receive instructions.
Lisa raised her hand. Lisa raised her hand.
Yeah, Lisa, if you have something to share, we can. Is she ready? Is she unmuted?
I don't believe I am either.
Maybe she doesn't mean.
I actually have a question just about, you know, I'm thinking big picture. I mean, I'm assuming if a family was not happy with the services their child was getting in district and they school choice out, the amount of money to a different district or specialized. Sort of, what would be, so it's, what I'm saying is it's worth investing and sort of making this the place that the kids are comfortable and suited and in school from not only like it's the right thing to do or from a financial.
It's absolutely right. If you're hitting, I mean, I don't know if you're going to end up going there or not. But that's absolutely one of the reasons for building a program. It's one, you want to keep your students in your building. Once we create, once, if we can no longer service students in our building, and they, if we can't get the early intervention in, then we got to start putting into other programs. That includes transportation at $300 a day. That includes, you know, and then the cost of the programs that can range from $45,000 to $100,000 depending on, those are just day programs. So building a program, if you can do a building in-house, and so it can also, if we build this at some sort of capacity, you also can take students in. So let's say, right now, we're looking at next year, we're not looking at taking outside students in because we have enough, what we, we think are going to, you know, there's IEPs and stuff, that kind of stuff that has to be worked out, whether or not this can be the proper placement, but we can project that. You know, we're going to have five or six students in this program. If two of those students, if this intervention can help, it can stop an outside placement, we'll pay for it itself over the years. Right now, we have a similar kind of program called Wings up in Conway. Conway's Wings program is kind of well-known amongst elementary schools in Western Mass. There's a waiting list to get in. People are trying to get in. Obviously they take care of the residents first and then they take care of unit 38. And so we actually have sent students to Wings from here. That's three to six up there. So this is kind of, you're going to kind of create your own niche of a program that is very much needed. And a lot of schools are trying to find, trying to figure out what to do with, either they have low incidence or they have a program in place. So the fact that we can get ahead and build the ability to keep our kids in-house and, and the idea that, you know, Kim had kind of talked about it. And some of the language you used may be a little understand, but basically the idea. They have the den where students are going out and they have a place they can come back to. And so they're not, it's not a separate classroom, separate down in the hall where they interact. And it's a place where they, it's a home where they can, they can go out, they can come back, depending on how they're doing that day. We see, we see Wings and that kind of stuff, based on what their IP needs are. They might be able to go out for some instruction in the classroom, morning time, that kind of stuff. And they have to come back for individualized instruction or small group instruction. So that's the whole idea. And the whole idea is that they transition out through the years and that by the time they're getting to the mid-range, mid-level classes, you know, depending on their IEPs, they're going to be different, people with different rates in which they can, you know, progress. So anyway, so absolutely the idea that this is, not only is it financially, you'll see in a good spot, we also have the need. If we don't build this, we're going to be building it kind of internally anyways because these students are, are, can't make it for a full day in a large classroom with the amount of stimulus and all the needs they have going on. So we'd be doing something internally to this. So this one kind of creates a dedication. It's going to dedicate a teacher, it's going to dedicate IAs to that. And as Tina is trying to, is working with the staff and also the other grade level teachers are part of that. It's not a separate program. It's their student. And then, you guys are supposed to be doing this. You got me going. You got me going. I love the word den. And the final thing is that we also are, as you'll see in a moment, that, you know, we have been reducing number of sections, which is increasing class size. So you're seeing class sizes in the upper teens right now. And if the most significant students are receiving supports from a different, from a different base in those slightly, they're mid-sized. I wouldn't call them large sized compared to other elementary schools out there. But those mid-sized classrooms, those students who need more attention are receiving it. And, you know, the slightly larger class can, can function without that, this teacher having to meet those needs. So if that makes sense.
I love the way you talked about inclusion because it's, it's a cornerstone to the philosophy that we have there. So thank you that. And the other thing I just wanted to add to that is we've had some brief initial conversations with a family or two and the relief and the gratitude coming, if you can only imagine walking in and the shoes there and, and wondering, you know, I have a little one that is age eligible for kindergarten, but what do I do with the complications that are coming? And it's really, it's really a beautiful thing.
Am I jumping ahead if I ask about one of your.
She was going to handle that.
I'm just going to say that we're not new to programs here, but we, this is something that we've done in the past. And sometimes the student need isn't there. So this isn't new to us. And we are, we'll hear people talk about us as being an inclusive school. So we do really believe in inclusion. And this just provides the flexibility where they're included and how often they're included for any individual.
Tina, it's safe to say the LEAP program is a model.
Similar.
So similar-ish.
Yes.
Currently we have, go with Tina, take it from there.
Currently a similar program that is grades three to six right now because that's where the student needs are. We, we have had two teachers in that program before. We've called a younger one, Lee Junior. But with similar types of support, some kids are in there receiving services most of the day. Some kids are just there as a touch point, like Darius said, and that can change depending upon a certain day for a student and where they are emotionally. So.
Would this replace them or would we turn into this?
No.
This would be the older student.
Three through six. This would be just pre-K to one. For right now, depending on where the needs shift out into.
So of course I've got like this image of a neat kind of, how does this manifest? What does it look like? Is it just in name only or is there like a part of a room or, yeah?
What is it? We have a extra, I guess, extra, it used to be a preschool classroom. So it's all set up. It has bathrooms, the sinks. It's a kind of a contained, beautiful room. Classroom on the left down the hallway, that pre-K space right now, it's a speech and language room. So we have the classroom for it. And what else? Is there more to it?
I was just sort of, you know, I, I, I heard the name of it and I heard the, who's going to be thinking, you know, who, who's going to be supporting, but I guess I just wasn't sure exactly what the, what was the program? What is the, how does it, how does it work?
Yeah, so it's a class, it is a classroom. It's a space. It's a dedicated space with children that are coming in and out of the den, if you will, but based on what they need. We might, so say for example, you're going, you're, you're a child and you haven't sustained a full day of school yet because of significant medical. But we really need to promote early literacy, socialization, numeracy, all of those kinds of things. So you may be included in the kindergarten class for the first part of the lesson. And then your stamina is waning. So you're coming into the den to be well cared of. The curriculum is brought into that and we work on the pace for you. Then we, we look at all the different data points that we have and then the next inclusion piece would come out. And it might look different for each kid and it's likely what we're hoping will shift over the course of time when they're with us. So inclusion is happening more and more often as skills and stamina and being a member of a community and, and those real experiences occur.
And other times there might be a student that checks in in the morning, kind of gets settled in for the day, but that would become their trusted space. So if other times during the day they needed to just have a quiet place for learning or check in, that's available to them as well.
Is that then specifically for this, this, like only for the children who are, who have this?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about that. I just want to make sure there's no other curriculum or programmatic questions, which we can come back to as well. If you think of something, if you want me to move on to staffing and finances first or.
Thank you.
Sorry, did I cut you off?
No, gosh, no. I was going to mumble, so.
Alright, let's talk about staffing and finances and then we can circle back on the whole conversation before we move on to other things. Because there's still more to talk about. So we're going to call this level services plus modifications. We're not going to call it new initiatives or needs because there is a low financial impact here. What we're proposing is some additional consolidation of grade levels. We talked about this last year with that third section that had the possibility to be reduced. We held off and kept three sections and I think it was grade two, right? Or.
Grade two was supposed to be three, but we ended up breaking kindergarten into three sections in first grade.
So a little confusing when you think about the exact grades, but basically what we're proposing at this time is to consolidate that section that we talked about last year. And when you see the enrollment figures, which we're also going to talk about, there's opportunity for additional consolidation. We're basically reallocating salaries. So we do have a teacher retirement. We currently have in the budget 19 grade level teachers. Based on the sections that we're recommending, we only need 18. We have a retirement. So it's the perfect opportunity to reallocate those wages, given our low level service budget, and roll them into this new program. And then the consolidation of an additional grade level, we're not eliminating a position. We're just reassigning staff and shifting staff so that everybody's in the right spot within the building to meet the needs of the students. So those two pieces will allow us to hire three new IAs, which will be needed to support this classroom and have one special education slash grade level teacher in that room. The difference is only 700 or $7,232 to the budget.
I want to speak to class size. So the grade that we're talking about consolidating right now has a class size of 12, 12 and 13. And we would be looking at, they would be 18 and 19.
So let's, let's jump ahead to the enrollment side. So this is what, no, no, you're fine because I don't have that info that you just shared. I have what it would look like if we did move forward with this. So that's important to know. So there is an asterix next to second grade and the den because that's where the changes would come in. So as Tina just said, second grade would be 12, 12, 13 without this change. With the change, it'll become a class size that's much more consistent across the school of 18 and 19. And then the den projection would be between four and six kids. So we went through five in there. So that gives you.
We also want to speak to, maybe you're going to, the continuity of staffing too. So when you have the bubble year of two, 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 three, two, three, it requires shifting every year of some teacher. And so honestly, when bringing it to faculty and staff, this is the preferred avenue.
And this has been discussed already at this school level with faculty and staff. So this isn't surprise information to anyone watching or coming back to the recording.
A question about sort of follow-up from last year. And have, relating to that whole question we had about what to do with the sections. How did it, how did it go? Like, what's your overall take on, you know, because there was just making, given that you were taking three smaller classrooms, making them into two slightly larger ones. Did it, are there any sort of, any feedback on, you know, successes or challenges with that change? Did it work out?
My initial reaction is no, I think it just went on as school as normal. But what I will say is there was one teacher that was saying it was a good move in the upper grades to have more kids in the class because they needed to spend a little less time working productively on their own or figuring out how to solve problems where when you have a class of 12 and you have two adults in the building, they're getting that, that feedback right away. And I think it's good for them before they're heading off into like middle school, high school to have that class sizes that are a little more average.
It's still under 20. Like they're still talking about.
Right. And these are not huge classes. Right. And these are not huge class sizes. These are moderate. It's not pretty good standard, I guess.
A lot of transition is pretty important.
Yeah.
The big, big school across the street.
Yeah. Thank you.
So as things stand currently, like I said, the budget in this year has nineteen grade level teachers. Um, we have the one retiree, so that's not any change to existing staff. That position um could just fall off due attrition. We're recommending reallocating those wages to this new program to help support that. Um, if we did not have the new program and the second grade classroom did still have three sections, we would likely be having the conversation about how to proceed with that. Do we keep it at three sections or do we reduce to create that consistency that Tina was just talking about? Um, we feel really strongly about the benefits of this program to the community. And I think that community is not just um families and students, but also staff. But this is a good plan for everyone involved and our recommendation is to move forward, especially given the low financial impact. You know, seven thousand dollar increase to add a new program um is pennies really in comparison to the rest of the budget. Any other questions about this before we keep going?
So other, other services would be needed and just handled from the staff we have now, like nursing or?
Yeah.
OTCT.
Yeah, yeah. And um, let, let me just do a quick calculation in my head. Four of the students are already getting that level of student uh services here. So it's, it's not a huge weight for the regular service providers.
So, I'll go back to, then had its own line of five. They're not also in another grade?
No, we took, we pulled them out of, of that grade. If it, so some of them are preschoolers.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now. So we reduced the preschool line and then I think there was a first grader maybe.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's a couple of potential new students, right?
Yeah.
Residents though, not tuitioned students.
So you said five to six this year. How many more could this program absorb before we're looking, you need to add more staff or whatever.
I have an absolutely great question. Yeah.
And so to also to, we talk about that. So first of all, it all depends on, it depends on needs. So you take your residents' needs first and let's say, let's say in two years' time, there's only four students in the program. And we say, you know what, we really can handle five or six. And then at that point, the specialty directors are talking to each other all the time. And like I said, we have openings. And so that student would be placed in tuition again, not for five thousand dollar school choice, but for fifty grand or more, depending on their services. So it actually, Conway does very well, the amount of money gets into its bed revolving due to means program because it, it really does pay. And if there's an individual IA with that, that money flows through as well. So it is a, there is, if you can support a program that gets a good reputation, not only are you saving town money from keeping you and obviously the benefit of keeping your students in-house, a tuition or two in can offset the whole program. And so this is something, it's a, when you have the ability to build it, it's, it's not everything. I know the next thing in your mind is then why isn't everybody doing it? Cause one, you have to have the, you gotta start with the administrative setup that's, that can support a program. Um, and then you gotta have the funds to start a program and usually with in-house needs where you're able to pull back. So you're kind of in a nice spot, you know, it's kind of like, why doesn't everybody go into selling ice cream? You know what I mean? Cause it's the most profitable, you know, you know, kind of thing. It's just, it's not as easy getting it off the ground. We're making it look really easy here, but we have people in the position, I'm looking at two veterans here, three veterans, um, that know how to run programs, um, including Karen Ferrandino, who's been around a long time as well. So it's not like someone new to the district or, you know, a new principal trying to take one of these off the ground is a lot more difficult than someone who has a background in, um, any intervention and such.
And you need the space.
We have a smooth space.
We have a consolidated.
In theory, it's pretty definitely, in second.
It works perfectly with the, um, air.
I have to say that was hilarious. That was his contribution. No, no, that's why he really was highlighting that, Mary. It was.
I mean, you just wanna curl it in the den right now, don't you?
I had a D E S part.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. All right, let's go back to presentation. We can certainly take more time for questions as we go through. If you think of something, jot it down and we'll circle back to it in regards to this program. We are gonna ask for you, um, if you're not ready to support it now, at least continue thinking about it and then we'll come back to it in February. But we can certainly circle back to questions. So while we're on the enrollment slide, if I can talk about a couple of other enrollment related things, not, not related to the new program, but just generally. So uh we knew last year when we did the reduction in sections, it was gonna limit our opportunities for new school choice enrollments and slowly reduce the school's population as we go through the years. So we've seen over the last two years, roughly a drop of about fifteen students over the last two years. Um, that's part resident and part choice. We will continue to see that decrease if we consolidate another class because the opportunities for choice are diminishing. Next, or the current year, the sixth grade class only has four school choice students. Um, but as, as you can see here, the current fifth graders, which are listed as sixth grade up there, because that's next year's projection, has ten. The year after has eleven. So you're losing just your choice kids alone, twenty-one students. We're not going to fill twenty-one spaces. There's just not going to be capacity for it. One, our classes will become too large, but two, we have to save space for if there's mid-year move in for residents or summer move in for residents as well. And consider the composition of the class with the existing students that we have on hand. So my point is, we're going to continue to see an enrollment decline. And that's an important component of this conversation. It's something we talked about last year. I just wanna keep it at the forefront as we go through.
School choice revenue. So those numbers alone, you know, you're looking at at least, you know, fifteen school choice, fifteen times five.
Yep.
You know, seventy-five thousand dollars just on the base before all the other um money we get are on choice for spent increments. So our choice, our school choice revolving account, which has been our kind of our, we've always had it behind us to help us in case anything goes wrong. Shari's gonna talk about it more, but it's important to understand that we chose to go this way, but it's also understanding that um administratively, we always said, oh, we always have choice. If we get in the bind, we always have choice. Um, eventually that's gonna be um a very small savings gap.
How much do we pay to tuition for people who choice out? Do we know that figure?
It's five thousand per student.
So do we know currently?
Oh, I don't have the outnumber. Um, I could look it up uh quickly, but the town covers that expenditure. This, it's not part of the school budget. So the town, I mean, ultimately it is a school expense. They would consider it a school expense. But the way that the state works is they give you X revenue and then they assess you for things like school choice or charter, um, special education increments for school choice, things like that. So they see a net revenue after paying for all those choice out students. But I could get us the exact number.
But we would, in theory, if we all of a sudden had an influx of people choosing out of our district, that would be something we would be curious about and like wanting to. So I guess that's my.
And if you just, FY, that's different for Frontier. Frontier is a direct correlation of if someone chooses out, Frontier loses that money off its budget. And so it's, which is also significant this year when you start, when we start having a meeting next month, that Frontier's choices up and its increments are way up because the amount of charter is way down.
Wait, their choice out is way?
Is way down.
Choice down is.
Is way down and charter is way down. Did I say that wrong? So the amount of students leaving Frontier is way down.
Gotcha.
And especially amount of charter leaving Frontier, which is twenty thousand to five thousand. It's twenty thousand dollars for any student that goes to Chinese immersion or whatever, any of the charter schools. Um, the amount of those, those students is way down as well. So the amount of actual revenue for Frontier is way up.
Gotcha. How many, uh, sorry, one other, um, number of physical classrooms. Um, I was just thinking about when you're changing the number of classes, like there's classes and there's classrooms. And so you, because there's one that got um reduced and that allowed for the den to be created. I'm just wondering, are there, are there eighteen classrooms and that's it or is there?
We have a lot of building space because we were set up to have three sections in each classroom.
Okay.
Um, and then there was extra classes, but so right now liaisons have classrooms and students are able to kind of join those classrooms and have some quiet learning. Um, so we have plenty of, plenty of space.
So I was just wondering like if that was gonna create some big capital, you know, like thinking about the building and are there empty rooms and don't go in there?
Oh, we fill them.
I'm sure you do. Well, that's great to know.
Good job offices moving in. Start that rumor.
Try to.
Far. Tired of having the extra space liaisons were four for, per room. So probably not the best setup when you're trying to work in four different small groups in one classroom. So we're.
There were times, I'm looking at enrollment history um from Jesse, even ten years ago, residents were close to four hundred students in the school before any school choice. So we were significantly larger than we are right now. Okay, a couple more things.
Because, because we've consolidated classrooms, there aren't slots for school choice. If we changed our mind and wanted to, there's some more, we don't have the slot.
Very limited.
Right now, very limited.
So Tina will have that, so we'll have this kind of setting this up. But looking at this, you can see like first grade, she's gonna have some discussion of maybe she'll be able to take, you know, fifteen and sixteen. We leave open for two slots, you know, so there might be some adjustment. Looking in fourth grade, there might be some, not sure there's anybody, applicants for fourth grade, usually if you don't get them in kindergarten or first, they're not coming. So there might be some small amounts, but right, there's not gonna be, cause you also have to leave room for any residents coming.
I actually attached the school choice recommendation sheet to the um principal's report more so, so you could see class sizes depending upon what you're choosing. Um, but it, yeah, so it would look like fourth grade, you're correct. It'd be very lucky to see if we can add more students. If we didn't consolidate second grade, it'd be very lucky.
And that's not on flights agenda. She's just kinda giving you the heads up ahead of time because it's all connected.
Um, so the other thing I wanna note with enrollment before we go back to the numbers is just the staffing numbers that, that correlate with our number of students. So our total FTEs in the building for um educational staff, so teachers and IAs, uh, or anyone on the unit A and unit C contract is uh seventy-four FTEs roughly. Uh, so that breaks down with this um new program having three new IAs and it, we would have uh twenty, I think thirty-one, sorry, we have twenty-eight. This would give us thirty-one. Um, and then the balance of the seventy-four is anyone on the unit A contract. So our student teacher ratio, our student staff ratio is, is four to one with a three hundred um student enrollment. Okay, a lot of info. Um, let's get back to numbers and, and money. One thing we haven't talked about yet are the true new requests and initiatives. So we talked about this program being new, but that there's very minimal financial impact because of the changes that we can make with existing personnel and budgeted personnel. But there's always the consideration of new things that are needed within the school. Um, this ask of just shy of twenty-five thousand is about a half a percent roughly addition to the budget and would bring our total budget to two point four three. So remember, we started at, I think it was one point eight three at level services, added a little bit for the new program. Now requesting about twenty-five thousand for new initiatives. These really aren't new initiatives though, I wanna say that. They're things that we haven't paid for in the past because um they're coming up as newer needs in regards to field trips and equity access. That has to do with providing um scholarships for families and students so that they can continue to attend all of our trips, but is also related to busing, making sure that we have the transportation for students with significant special needs, especially if they're in a wheelchair or require some type of specialized device to travel. So this piece is really important, not only to Deerfield, but goes along with that equity plan um and speaks directly to school committee providing the resources to support equity and inclusion. Curriculum and consumables, or curriculum consumables, not curriculum and consumables, um, is related to the new curriculum. Uh, we did due diligence and looking at the previous curriculum and making sure that any of our consumables that we were previously purchasing, we accounted for those funds, so we didn't just add them for the budget. Um, Laura did a great job working with principals to calculate how many, you know, new workbooks we would need or um each of the components for the different parts of the new curriculum. And then other supplies and materials, that could be anything within the building really. And there's one word, word to relate it to is inflation. We haven't necessarily experienced these costs yet, but we anticipate costs of everything going up from paper for the copy machines to art supplies. So a pretty insignificant ask in my opinion compared to the total number and all very reasonable items that Darius and I support as being included in the budget.
Does this include the fixes to the playground that you've been talking about or is that in this this lawyer?
Um, any changes to the playground would be under the bigger project that we haven't moved forward yet because we're still in the earliest phases of design.
And that wouldn't be operations or come from capital. So we'll talk, and we're just about to go into the other monies we're gonna be talking about.
Okay, so um when you all see the line by line budget, which you don't have yet, but you will get, you'll recall there's several columns. There's the general fund and then there's all of the grants and revolving funds, which I said is part of the puzzle for the budget process that we have to consider. Um, so what I wanted to give you is some revolving fund and grant information on the next two slides. So what we have planned in FY twenty-five to spend some from revolving funds and grants is on the left-hand side of this slide. Um, you can see it's just shy of eight hundred thousand, uh, which means that with the five million budget plus the grant and revolving fund support, we're looking at about a total operating budget of around six million, which correlates at three hundred students, roughly twenty thousand per pupil. A lot of people ask for the per pupil cost, so that gives you some talking points in the community if you need them. Um, we rely heavily on grants and revolving funds, as you can see here. And like Darius said, uh, we're gonna have to pay attention to the school choice numbers. What I wanna let you know about the school choice account is that the three hundred and twenty-six thousand includes ninety thousand for an out of district placement that we have been paying from school choice. That student is no longer gonna be in district next year, so we're gonna have savings. However, I'm keeping it in there because you never know what can happen. Um, if we don't spend it, it just builds up our balance at the end of the year. Uh, Esser funds. So originally we talked about adding the sixty-two thousand back to budget for the teacher wages this year that we paid in twenty-four. Uh, Darius and I are recommending that we use some of our Esser fund balance to cover employee separation costs, which is the contractual obligation for anyone who is retiring for the sick buyback. Deerfield is going to pay out um like three and a half staff next year, which is almost a hundred thousand dollars. The budget has thirty thousand built into the general fund already. We need another funding source. One of the options would be to increase the general fund budget, not really ideal because it's a one-time expenditure. We don't expect to have this many staff retire at the same time in the future, so we look for other options. If we didn't have Esser, we could be going to dip into school choice even further or talking with the town about if the possibility of other, any other funding sources. So Esser has to be used by September. We have the funds available. It seems like a good use of those funds, so we're throwing that in there. Um, and then the other balances on the other side, I'm just giving you the current. Esser has a hundred and forty thousand left after we spend what's left for earmark for this year. Back off the seventy thousand for the sick buyback, we'll have roughly seventy thousand. Um, there are already placeholders in there to spend that money, whether it's stipends for curriculum development, summer support, uh, additional curriculum materials and supplies that are needed, uh, some building maintenance things. So there is a plan in place to use all of those funds so that we don't have to return any to the. So there is a plan in place to use all of those funds so that we don't have to return any to the state because we don't want to do that. Uh, circuit breaker. So circuit breaker is a special education reimbursement. We currently receive some circuit breaker reimbursement because of the out of district placement cost. With circuit breaker, you have to hit a threshold of, I'm gonna say fifty thousand, just to use a round number. It might be like forty-six, something, it's forty-eight. Even if it's fifty, you have to hit fifty thousand, spend over that, and then they reimburse you up to seventy-five percent of the overage. So because our out of district placement cost currently is so costly, we see about forty thousand dollars in reimbursement back from circuit breaker. We use that now to support the budget. Um, next year, it, this will get one more reimbursement because this current kid is a current student and you're always one year in a rear with this reimbursement from the state, so we'll see that money next year. We don't necessarily have a plan to spend it. We'll get two years to spend it down. Um, I would recommend that we hold on to it in twenty-five and see if there's any unforeseen circumstances that come up. Maybe we need one new, one more IA in this program, depending on IEPs and student needs, or there could be somebody new that moves into town that needs additional services. Uh, so I would recommend holding on to those funds. Rural aid uh for FY twenty-four, we have done a little bit of spending. The allocation, I think, was close to ninety-seven thousand. Um, we bought some, we buy new radios? What did we buy? We did, we bought more radios. Um, and then I think there was other, another small maintenance expense in there. So we've spent a little bit of that money. Um, and we're still talking about how to further spend that down this year. And then FY twenty-five rural aid is subject to appropriation. Our thought with rural aid moving forward is that we find a way to help offset the budget with those funds if it continues to be maintained at the level that it's at. Because, you know, a hundred thousand dollars roughly is about two percent of our budget. So it, it can be a huge support for our town. Next slide, I'm giving you projections for revolving funds. And these really are exactly what projection says. They're, they're rough estimates. So um it's based on current year revenue and current year expenses as well as looking back historically. You can see that our funds are in a positive position. Uh, we do not have plans to spend any of the special education revolving money right now. Uh, two years ago, we didn't think we were going to have any funds in that account. And then we did have a student come in out of district for part of the year last year, so we do have thirty-five thousand there. I would hold it. There's nothing that says we have to spend it. Let's save it as a, a placeholder for future special education expenses. School choices and our school lunch, I'm sorry, is in a really healthy position. Um, we're basically spending about what we're bringing in year to year. The state is pushing districts to spend their high balances. So I'm in continued conversation with the food service director about what other equipment do we need? How can we increase food quality? Um, what local, you know, farm to table initiatives can we put in place? So those are conversations that are happening regularly. Early childhood, uh, Kim is predicting we're going to be full. So these estimates are based off of um prior year. You can see we're spending a little bit of our reserves, but, you know, thirty-five thousand in the bank feels like a good number. You know, if we had to hire an extra IA or um, you know, add additional services for that cohort of kids, we would have funds to do that. Uh, and school choice, so the end of your balance looks really healthy. Having nine hundred thousand dollars uh as our bank is a really good position for us to be in. But we cannot stress enough that our revenue is going to continue to decline. Um, the three hundred thousand that I have in there, I actually think could be a little bit high, which is not typical. Usually I'm really conservative on revenue. Um, so that could end up being like two seventy-five, depending on if we fill those four spaces or not. But with the outgoing sixth graders, you know, and obviously we're overspending that. But our expenses are also holding the ninety thousand for out of district placement that we don't actually need. I'm just earmarking it in case something comes up. So that balance should be higher. With that said, if we have drops for multiple years of fifty to seventy-five thousand with the next two classes outgoing of twenty-one kids in school choice, we're gonna have to decrease expenditures. And the only place for expenses to go is to the general fund. So while we're in a really healthy spot with the general fund right now, being less than two and a half percent, even with some new initiatives and changes, in the future, we might be talking about, you know, how do we absorb more costs? And if we don't absorb more costs, nine hundred thousand at three hundred thousand in expenses is gonna go really quickly if our revenue is not increasing. So I just want to make sure that this committee and the public is hearing that message because it's really important part of the conversation. Um, we also have a placeholder of fifty thousand in school choice for the front entryway project for overages. Um, the town has that MVP grant. We have funding from the town warrant that we asked last year to do the um paving over again. We have a matching portion that we're kicking in already. And based on the early estimates, we think we're probably not gonna have enough money, even with all of those three dedicated pots, there's always change orders in overages. So we're holding some funds in school choice for our kids. If we don't spend that, it just increases our balance at the end of the year. So it's just an account to watch really closely. All right, historical information is up next. I'm not gonna read through here the, the point that I want to make, two things on here. Um, our increases have been pretty consistent between the two and a half to three and a half percent on average. So I think we're in line this year with where we need to be at two point four three. I also want to put in a little reminder that in fiscal year twenty-two, the budget increase, I believe, was three point three six on the warrant. And because of our budget freeze and the zero increase in twenty-one, so in twenty, we had a budget freeze because of COVID. Twenty-one, the towns, because we were expecting a loss of town revenue from the state of twenty percent, right? Um, so that all four of our towns asked us to come in with level funding, not level services, level funding. So between those two years, we were able to save up some additional funds. We also had several LOAs and personnel changes that allowed us to have extra cash too. So on town meeting floor, um, which was actually the frontier field because we were still meeting outside. We weren't back inside yet because of COVID. Um, we reduced the budget by fifty thousand dollars to bring it to two point three one percent. And we also took off all of our requests for capital expenditures, which was about another thirty-seven thousand. So that year in twenty-two, we um helped support the town by reducing school expenses by eighty-seven thousand dollars. So that's just a part of the story that we don't talk about regularly. I think it's good to remind us, especially as you're having public conversations about what the budget looks like. All right, we're almost done. I promise. Um, budget recap. So we started talking about uh the drivers of the budget. Seventy-five percent of the budget is related to direct student teaching and learning. Uh, wages, facilities and operations, special ed and transportation are major drivers there. The challenges we face moving forward, um enrollment decline and school choice opportunity for growth. And uh the numbers, you can see there a reminder of what level services is, the increased costs for the new program, the new requests and where the January eighteenth first draft falls at two point four three percent increase over the prior year. That's it for me. Next steps. Um, so next steps, as I said, one, we can come back to questions if anyone has them. I know I gave you a lot of information and talked really quickly, especially about the program. If there's any questions while Kim and Tina are here. Um, we are hoping to get approval to move forward with that so that these guys can start doing what they need to do far enough in advance. But if you're not ready, we can wait till February. Um, if you have feedback on the budget, we'll take it because it gives us direction where to come back at the next meeting for you. Otherwise, we sit tight and we'll bring you back more materials in February. You'll get a line by line budget so that you can see all of the expense accounts. There'll be a, a narrative coming, which is what you're used to seeing from me. You don't usually see this um type of presentation, but it'll spell out, you know, that way. Public can see, you know, what the story is in paragraph form versus the PowerPoint. So um more materials to come, but.
You're thinking, I mean, I think the, I think we have a solid budget plan here. I mean, there is, you could look at using um rural aid to reduce it a little bit more, but I would wait for more information because the governor's budget is gonna come out on the twenty-fourth, next Wednesday. And we'll know what she's recommending for rural aid. So at least we have an idea. If she level funds it, we still have to be conservative. She puts more into it, it may come back a little. So you gotta get a, have a little buffer because they may end up cutting that. Depending, and right now the state's revenue is down. I've been reading about that in the paper, but state revenue is down. So they're, they're saying be conservative in your budget. So us having a few extra um little pots of areas where, you know, just outside of school choice might be a smart place to be for next year anyways. Um, so coming in at two and a half, just under two and a half is probably, might be a good spot. We'll also know, obviously, the town is watching what it's gonna get for reimbursement from the state for the roads. Because if it doesn't get that, they're gonna take a loan out, but you're just gonna feel a general strain and also a general, a general mood in town that there's money flying everywhere. So we may have to, you know, see where that money comes in. We get a lot of money there. They don't have to take a loan at all, you know. That may implicit, you know, where, what people are saying to us. So another reason to kind of pause and not go a hundred miles an hour forward on it and just be patient to February. But it's one of the best budgets we've had um in the first read.
I mean, I personally feel very comfortable voting, taking a vote on the debt. I won't say for a standard, but I think it makes fiscal sense to me. Like it, it feels fiscally irresponsible not to do it, regardless of whatever information comes out of February. Um, so I personally feel comfortable about that, especially if that makes your planning and sort of your February presentation easier if you know that like this is a go and then waiting a little bit to sort of decide about some of the.
Yeah, so you can't vote it tonight. We didn't write it that way in the agenda. Um, but what we're looking for, we're looking for, we're looking for, please move forward with the continued programming of that. So you basically allows it, we're not gonna sign any contracts with anybody prior to the next meeting, but allows the conversations to move forward. Um, and then we can bring back, there's any problems or any kind of, I don't suspect. But you're basically saying, please continue um putting that program together and anticipating funding at their spring, you know.
Yeah, I mean, um, just my own thought about it is to, I mean, it sounds like you've thought this through incredibly well and made a great case for it. Um, and I'm only just like, wait, it's really just two point ever, you know, like, what are we missing? So I would say go back and make sure you haven't missed anything and that there's not like, oh, my gosh, we forgot about that. Um, and so it's kind of how I'm thinking.
That's what I think too sometimes.
This is too good to be true, right?
Yeah, how many times, read this again, Darius?
Yes. When it's really high, I do that and when it's really low, I do that too. So we'll absolutely go through every and again.
No doubt.
I heard it had more.
Well, make sure you're not missing anything that you really need.
Yeah, I'm cultural looking forward with everything that was proposed and any additional programs and requests. Good for us to do that, if you're doing, great.
Thanks, absolutely. I think our children should be educated in their home school. And, you know, I hope, or just know we'll have to sustain it. You know, I wouldn't want it to, anybody to have to make a change later on. And if the way to sustain it is to bring others in later on, if our enrollment slows low, that's a great point.
So all the sort of safely putting aside or not, oh, wow, look at this, you know, like banking on the future. Because that's what these, that's what our schools are about. Um, but uh, uh, yeah, sorry, I had thought that it ran out the door.
I also, I know we focused on keeping the kids in their home school, but it provides value to every single student in the school who can share a classroom with people who have different abilities or health status. So it's, you know, it's not just about like this one population, it's about sort of our whole community.
And yeah, that brings back to what I was thinking was the idea of people move to the town to be able to, often for the school. So you don't want them to have to go elsewhere. And, and exactly that, you know, people need to be, or at least in my opinion, is that the whole, that holistic thing you're talking about is, is about the multi-generational, multi-year of having that mix because we're too, you know, individualistic and um silent. So that's good.
We'll keep working then. Thank you.
Very, thank you.
Right, yeah. For the Yankee candle donation, we are going to vote on it.
Oh, you wanted me to talk about it?
I thought you guys were, and I was just saying thank you.
Um, yeah, so Yankee Candle donated four thousand dollars to this school. Um, we're looking at using it to supplement recess equipment and cooperative games purblings. It's with the team staff that have really shown as a need. And this is where Darius would say, I think we need a vote. But I also just want to thank Yankee Candle Public for consistently supporting Deerfield and education.
Great. And that's really, really generous of them to do that every year.
Every year, yes.
All right, I'm motion to, are you making the motion? I'm making a motion to accept the Yankee candle donation, four thousand dollars, and gratitude.
I second.
All in favor? And we also are going to discuss the Exxon Educational Alliance Grant.
Yeah, so that's a five hundred dollar grant from Exxon, our neighboring um mobile. Oh, gosh, I didn't know I was speaking to this too. Yeah, we have, but it's, it's worked differently. Usually he comes and presents a check and then I bring it to you and get something. But um, we, we supplement our science and math. We can, they help us go online and apply for one of them, but they give us the five hundred donation. It really helps us with our math night to consistently, I think it's coming for family math night. So I think we need a vote and then um, once we get a vote, he's coming to see me.
Does anyone want to make a motion? Accept the Exxon Educational Alliance Grant, the fact is, guys.
I make a motion to accept the Exxon Educational Alliance Grant.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, and thank you to Exxon and thank you for letting us know. Except reports, uh, I have no report as chair, collaborative report, I send out via email. I have to answer your questions starting, but that's the report. Superintendent's report.
I'm just, I sent that out as well. The highlight uh for Deerfield is that entryway project, you know, the final, we have the final engineering plans. And so we're basically getting it ready to go off the bid. Um, the busman worked in the town because there's so many different funding sources coming in, coordinating with the town. Surely I had a meeting with the town last week um to kind of make sure that we're on the same page, how to do that. Um, the two other uh, these that are Deerfield focused there is that there is a new health curriculum out and this year and basically um a letter regarding um health and human development, otherwise known as sector education, was kind of sent out earlier this month. Um, authored by Laura Cross, the way here. But it's just, it does stir up um conversations sometimes in the community and certainly from students. So I'm just letting you know, there's a little bit more going on with that new health curriculum. And it actually, we have questions regarding it. We do have Laura here. And then we also just had our tier focused monitoring review, which happens basically every six years with a three year in between where they come and they look at our special ed programs. And I actually had my debriefing morning, but we had our re-debriefing, re?
De.
Debriefing. Keep your briefs on, make your debriefing at, at uh, at, at three this afternoon. So basically, in about three months, we'll get a final report. Um, there was nothing too alarming with they told us, some minor paperwork stuff that we have to work on um and some other areas of recommendation. But so we'll be getting that and then making the corrections. So it's basically they find things out of compliance and then they give you a correction plan. Depending, the correction plan is dependent on how severe, some of it is just like, you know, I letterhead on something correctly versus, you know, um, you know, you'd be filing things differently, that kind of stuff. So, but there's nothing too alarming in the verbal report.
Your report mentioned the transportation aspect, didn't it?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't talk about that. I just. Talk about that, I just realized.
Oh, yeah, you know, it's the first thing on, we did just put out the transportation bid. This week, Monday or is it next Monday?
Last.
This morning.
Last week.
Oh, last week?
Yeah, it's been on the weeks.
All right, anyway, transportation bid is out there. Because we are, the our, our five-year bid to be crypto is up this July one, or June thirtieth, and so it's out to bid for another five-year whatever. And so we did that through FurCog, and so about a month will be opening bids in the year.
Have we always done through FurCog?
So procurement, yes, we've done a lot through FurCog. Somebody that licensed in procurement, we threw many classes recently. However, it's a lot of work, and the bigger the contract and the more moving parts, we really, it's worth a couple of thousand dollars to have it being done by an outside group. They take care of all the legal paperwork, they take care of all the legal posting. It's just, we, we don't have the ability to do it in-house. Some of the smaller projects this spring, we're going to attempt to do some of our own or use a online, is an online company, it's far less expensive for something like the fire alarm panel at Frontier. Very simple, straightforward, there's not multiple things moving, you know, that kind of stuff. It's not a five-year contract and that kind of thing. So we'll see how that goes, but FurCog right now is overwhelmed, they have some personnel changes, and the amount of, if you can kind of look through just from us alone, that's going to them in the last year. We've had so many different projects go through them, but.
The transportation bid last time was not through done, though. They were actually opened at the school. I think TMS was here, and I think. I think Judy Cool managed the whole thing when TMS was here.
Because maybe because it's a different one.
Right.
I guess you had to do it.
Yeah. But for a lot of our projects, we do, it was them, we just don't have the capacity. Like, it would be the only thing that I do right now is monitor all the different project timelines and deadlines and.
Why they're there. Why it exists, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and they're, they just, they know the law, like, I have the license now according to the state, but I don't do the ins and outs of that every day, so they really understand what we should and shouldn't.
They did an excellent job, like, they continue to do an excellent job, that's why you keep going back, right? It's like, why, why change?
Just sort of gives us some peace of mind, too, that we're following MGL and doing what we need to do legally.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So good.